Six oh, three or four maybe. So good evening everybody, welcome to the Board of Health meeting for Wednesday, February 27th. This is a public meeting, being video and audio required for cable broadcast and internet posting This also ends up on YouTube, which is not in here, but we'll add that. All internet posting, I guess that's YouTube. So, whoever wouldn't mind standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a couple of notes. We don't normally have coffee and donuts. So I wouldn't get used to it. Try spec cork for donating them this evening. I think we're going to the first order of business, we'll call a public hearing to order this six oh five correct?
Yep.
Okay, we have the notification, public hearing, you there?
Yeah, legal notice. Lieutenant Dighton, Department of Health, regulations pertaining to the inspection, designing, construction of on-site sewage disposal systems within the town of Dighton. On Wednesday, February 27th, 2019, Dighton Board of Health, a real public hearing at the old Dighton Town Hall, 111 Somerset Avenue, Dighton, Mass. We have our level meeting room at 6:05 PM to discuss and talk on regulations pertaining to the inspection, designing, construction of on-site sewage disposal systems within the town of Dighton. Anyone interested in obtaining a full copy of after the regulation may do so from the Dighton Board of Health office located at the old Dighton Town Hall, 111 Somerset Avenue, Dighton, Mass. And we have the, just click in here. The verse.
Okay.
Just before, just so everybody knows, I take over one approach, this is one at a time, I think everybody has a copy. The, so you know, this is our recommendations going forward. If I'm, this is actually stone. If you have some comments or a better way to do it, or, you know, an opinion, please speak up. And we'll listen and make the necessary changes if we, you know, if they're reasonable and, you know, like, what we discussed, we've gone over this now for probably a couple of months, so. We're at the point where the public hearing, the public input, so we'll begin. And on the very first page, number one, I really, I'm not gonna read it, because everybody has a copy. Well, probably for the public, I should. All cesspools automatically fail. Any questions, comments, concerns? Number two, if the percolation tests were done prior to May 1995, or there is no record of a soil evaluation on file at the Dighton Board of Health, then a soil evaluation must be performed by a licensed soil evaluator and witnessed by the Board of Health. All systems must be soil evaluated to abduct, create enough water feet below the lowest elevation of the leaching area.
Yes, sir. I have comments?
Yes.
So first, for the record, I want everyone to know at home and in this room that I'm here, not as a town official, but I'm here, excuse me, I am here representing my longstanding company, which has been in business for over 20 years, and we specialize in Title V inspection services and consulting. I have been employed by this Board of Health, by other Boards of Health throughout the general area. I've also done plan reviews, so I have quite a bit of experience in Title V. My business has also brought me to over 130 different communities around the Commonwealth. And in those communities, I find out what all of the local regulations are. So, I find myself pretty well versed in the background of what communities are doing. So specifically to number two, my concern is the following. When you do a Title V inspection, the only requirement is that the leaching area be above the water table. It does not require you to be four feet from the water table. If the septic system is within the water table, which will include the high water mark, which is referred to as modeling into a soil evaluation, there'll be evidence in the system components that show intermittent backups in the system. So if your Title V inspector is competent, you don't need to do a soil evaluation to figure out that this thing is in the groundwater. I think this just adds an extra burden to the inspection process, it also adds additional costs to the homeowner. And I don't think it's necessary if you have competent, excuse me, competent inspectors doing inspections in your jurisdiction. With that said, I hold about 18 different licenses around the Commonwealth, independent of my state license, to make sure that in jurisdictions, they're comfortable with you and your competency level to do inspections. That might be something that the town wants to do, I just don't think regulating inspections to the manner that you're doing it is the way to go about it. I yield.
Any, any other comments?
Bob Verer, B pro in engineering. I am too into the system inspector, although the only ones I inspect are the ones that I've conducted protests on and have designed myself. If it's something that we don't have records on in our office, then we usually pass it out to an independent. And I feel the same way that Jim does, which regarding digging a hole and observing the water table with a four feet separation, through the same comments that he brought up, so I just wanted to put that on record.
No, Phil, shouldn't you want to respond? Well, I just want to say, it says it must be soil evaluated to abduct, create enough water feet below the system. It doesn't say the system has to be four feet above the water table. It just says we want them to dig a hole four feet below the system to make sure that they're looking to water table. So it's a two-part thing, that was.
So, Jonathan, Jim, what you were saying, when you're out there, you're looking for different things that identify that the system may be failing, maybe staining in the groundwater.
Yeah, if, if you know what you're looking for, and you look at a system component, if, if the system is in, within the high water level mark, then you will have intermittent backups in the distribution box. If those even last just for a short period of time, it does leave distinct markings in the D-box, which tells you that this thing is more than likely within the high groundwater.
Which, which is a great point, I, sometimes I understood where Charlie was coming from when you put this on. Sometimes you'll have some Title V inspectors that will just grab the most recent soil lot, and it's not from the modeling.
Right.
They'll just say, yeah, it's a 10 feet.
Right.
And it could be, it could be among the system right next door, or there could be an identification, like, water right there.
Well, that's all part of doing a diligence as a Title V inspector, so.
I wouldn't have a problem correcting this, providing we have the town license the inspector, as I do know of on towns too. For this whole purpose of, we know who's doing what work, we have recourse if there's been issues, you know. I mean, we just had a recent inspection that was very questionable. That's my comment on it.
Hi. By 18 licenses, sometimes it's a simple list filling out a form and, and paying the fee, and some, I have to go in front of the Board of Health, and it's a Q and A session. So, you know, there's a wide range of, the void can certainly come up with something they feel is amicable, so that your Board of Health agent feels comfortable. I review Title V's from the other side, ask the Board of Health agent, I get what he's saying. Some of them, I scratch my head and wonder what they're doing.
That's what we're trying to avoid.
And I would encourage that. I just don't know if it should be done through regulation. I think it actually, you can have more control over it if you license them internally, come up with a licensing procedure.
And then just say that they must determine groundwater by different means besides just a, some kind of narrative saying what they did. They actually looked at it and they didn't see any staining, they went and did surrounding systems.
Right.
So, the light are coming.
You made those?
Yeah, yeah, that's why I have it right in there.
Yeah, I kind of want the other.
Just in.
I think a narrative. I understand the additional word and so forth, but I think, I like Kevin's idea of a narrative explaining all the, right?
Well, the last page says you must describe how you determine groundwater, and a lot of them will say, I looked around, I didn't see any ponds, or, well, there's a sump pump in the basement, so, you know, and right now I don't have any teeth to say, well, if there's a sump pump in the basement, the system's six feet below ground, then it must be in the groundwater, you know, it's speculative at this point.
I had, I had one previously, another, I actually had the owner come back and saying, I think, thinking, I, I don't think this is right, now I'm actually going through this whole process, but I went back to the inspector, and I kept saying the same thing, what did you see, what did you, so, pretty much they're doing the inspection, then what's, and what they see when they're out there, so they can make you feel comfortable at that time. You can always go back, you can always go back and do the soil evaluation, if there's a second opinion, I guess.
I mean, the town of Berkeley requires that they update the system either while they're doing a Title V inspection, so they can see what they're seeing.
Yeah.
No, I'm saying, these are other levels of how the town will handle things, so.
That's nonsense.
I would not go to say that.
I would just hear, on your behalf, you know, expect us to try and stay.
Yeah, we can move on to that one, and stick it under, to the end. Thank you.
Thank you.
System must be pumped as part of the inspection unless proof of pumping within the last six months is provided. Pumping records must be submitted and attached to the report. Prior pumping tank measurements and the integrity of the tank must be confirmed. Yeah, I think that's kind of reasonable and common sense, so. Water usage must be calculated in gallons per day under the no-condition section of the report. Water meter readings must be submitted and attached to the report. You know, I think these things are part of the job that people aren't. We didn't have teeth before to enforce it, so that's what we're trying to do, so.
The only thing I would think, reading now, is it should probably say you could not well, that you have to submit the water meter and obviously it not really happened.
If connected to municipal water supply, that should preface it.
And the response of, I called the water department and they were on break, so that couldn't get the water meter.
Yeah. Go on to five, you're pretty already. The outlet cover of the septic tank must be brought to grade, and the D-box cover must be brought to within six inches of grade at time of inspection. In addition, a filter must be placed on the outlet of the tank.
Very good.
Yes.
I, I have a question on that, to be honest. Jeff Simons, Simons Construction Material, resident of Dighton, installing septic systems since 90, in business, doing excavation work, 29 years now, unfortunately, it's been a long time. And I agree to all that, I just, as far as clarification purposes go, who's doing the work on the septic themselves? Is it the Title V inspector, or would the town's going to allow a Title V inspector to do risers and fit zable and filters? Or what, is, or is that going to have to be something a licensed installer, a town's going to have to do? I mean, at the end of the day, we pay yearly licenses, I mean, there's a point in time, I had 17 licenses, this year I got 13. It's a yearly fee to a lot of cities and towns, and even, I, there's nothing on here I don't agree with, I just wanted to say, who's going to be doing the work on it, I, I think that needs a little clarification.
For Title V, it's supposed to pull apartment.
Right.
Work.
I agree.
My stance on it, through work for the last 11 years, has been, if it, if it's a riser, it has no effect on the functionality of the system. So if it was just a riser to help a homeowner with proper maintenance.
Yep.
I have no problem if an inspector to do it. If it has anything to do with the actual functionality, then it would have to be an installer.
Yep, filter, tee, okay, yeah.
That's fine.
I agree, yeah, I agree.
So if we follow just the idea about the number two, about having licenses for inspectors, we could, as part of that license, allow them to put risers on, as, as part of their license. Like, an install license allows them to install, but the system inspector license could allow them to install.
The other thing we could do is simply modify number five to include a permit and a license installed when we need to perform these tasks. Then the, then the inspector knows that if they go out and see this, it may constitute a conditional pass or something of that nature.
As far as.
Just a suggestion.
As far as the time, when I'm saying, then I'm considering maybe splitting it, the filter piece being a separate one, and the riser being a separate, because I, I have no issue with the inspector, you know, I mean, they grab a couple of risers and put it on there, you know. Absolutely.
Right. They still gotta pull a permit, and they still gotta look at it, but.
I agree with putting a riser on a D-box, using your covers, you have to replace the cover of the D-box to put the, to hold it.
Definitely.
So, you gotta get the cover that fits on the existing D-box.
So we're gonna amend that for clarification purposes, or?
Just for the homeowner to have, you know, the right access. You want to do it right, you don't want some write down, it's like taking a new, like, handle.
You wrote it, probably.
Yeah, you may want to, like, kind of change some of those approaches, so.
Number six, inspectors must conduct a room count of the house to determine the number of bedrooms as defined in Title V, and submit a sketch of the floor plan of the dwelling with the Title V report. And drawn is acceptable. And we know why this one is in.
I know why it's here. There's only one other town that does this, but I know why it's here, so I, I'm not in opposition. I will tell you for the record though, it does force inspectors to go to the house twice in some cases. This town may not require it beforehand, but the other community, they won't give you anything from the fire without the floor plan of the house. That is a little bit cumbersome, because now I have to visit the house twice. First, to get the floor plan, and then second, to go to the inspection. So if you're looking at it to be attached to the Title V report, then that makes perfect sense.
It no doubt, it just doesn't say that the inspector has to draw the floor plan, the homeowner can draw it.
Yeah, right. Do you want, do you want, do you want the inspectors to verify?
Yeah, I won't take the floor plan from the homeowner, that's just my name, it's going to attach to my report, but.
No, I understand, but I'm saying it doesn't require you to, to draw it, it's like, in a formal capacity.
Yeah, you don't need a architect or anything to draw it, so. This actually has been, come up twice, I think, that I can recall, a number of rooms, so. Number seven, if the state and our local requirements cannot be met, the report should be classified as a conditional pass or needs further evaluation by the Board of Health. Excuse me, and include a thorough written explanation of why the local, local requirements cannot be met. A supplemental narrative will need to be submitted.
I have a comment.
All right.
So, a couple of things on this one. First off, the Title V report has very specific items listed on the conditional pass and needs further eval by the Board of Health. So if you wish to expand on that, I can tell you that I've only done that in communities that have a separate policy or regulation specifying that they want X to be conditional pass or needs further evaluation. Because as a Title V inspector, unless it meets specific requirements of those sections, I'm not putting anything in that section, that isn't it. So, just, just bear in mind, if there are other things that you may be thinking of that would be a conditional pass or needs further eval, I think it needs to be done in, in a local adoption, and then the inspectors can all be aware. In addition to what's in the Title V report, this is what this Board of Health's looking for.
The only thing I can think about on that one, is maybe when a house is abandoned, sometimes it's tough to actually do a whole inspection, a thorough inspection.
The town will want, for instance, if they have a abandoned house, doesn't have water use, it's an automatic, needs further evaluation.
Eastern's the same way.
Eastern's the same way.
So this way you will.
But it's in their regulations, so as a Title V inspector, I need to find out what their local, I call them media secrecy's are, and then I apply that when I do inspections in that town.
Did we even identify that, abandoned houses on this, or?
What the procedure is?
We have it anywhere somewhere.
I know it says, when, when it's required.
Yeah, we'll go through this, they would get those.
And number eight.
Well, we're not saying beautiful.
So, so. Do you have any comments on that?
No, well, yes, briefly. I've seen a good handful of Title V inspections over the years that have, they've checked off the boxes, and they've maybe written the absolute minimum possible, that would technically satisfy a state requirement for Title V inspection, but it tells them almost nothing. And it's very frustrating when somebody gets conditional pass or failure, and there's almost no information on that, because they don't feel like taking that extra minute to actually write a good report. And I, I don't think it's doing anyone justice, but, so, my take on it is that's what that's, you know, if you write a good report and document, hey, it's conditional pass, not just, you know, staining the D-box. You know, hey, stained D-box, I measured it this high, you know, just a little more information, so when I, I don't know, read them here, but I'd like to read that and be able to picture in my mind, hey, you know, this is what he saw on his, why he's putting a conditional pass, why he's putting it as a failure.
Would it be better if instead of, will need to be submitted, the supplemental narrative that was may need to be submitted? Because then, because you can't explain it, but he's right, a lot of them just completely check off conditional pass, and like, why did it?
When you read back a report, it's a conditional pass, there's no doubt, it's in his mind.
In your reports.
Yeah, so I don't want to start on your reports, supplement to my thoughts, you know what I mean?
But some people may need extra, but when it's.
Like, yours would be fine, if that's, but, again, I couldn't, couldn't enforce that.
I don't want to beat the licensing thing, but it's really, really useful, because you can do and say all this, what's the enforcement action against the Title V inspector? If they're locally licensed here, then you can just not renew their license or revoke it. You have much more control.
That's true. We generally.
I don't like paying for the extra licenses getting involved, I'm a state certified inspector, but I understand why they do it.
I mean, then that way, if there's a list of snakes, and we change rates, we can let those six know. I mean, we only have less than two handfuls, I think, to do them on a regular basis.
Just the ones that come in from out of town, and they don't know the regs and.
Well, when they submit, you let them know if they have to be licensed, if that's the case.
Well, obviously, it's going to be right on our website, that they will need to be licensed, so, yeah.
One of the things you're supposed to do as an inspector is visit the Board of Health.
Yeah, you have to do, you have to do research for it. Why don't you give me something?
Ready? So what, what Jim said to Ben?
Thank you.
Time, Luke?
Yeah.
That way, like, they'll illustrate that they need to do a longer narrative, they can, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to number eight. The system shall be inspected prior to any change in type establishment, or change from seasonal use to year-round use, which is defined as a facility that is not supplied with a year-round approved water source, or after the system has been abandoned, or increase in design flow, or when a condition may impact the functionality of the system. An expansion of use of the facility served by which a building permit or occupancy permit form the local, from, should read from. The local building inspector is required. Whenever in addition to an existing structure which changes the footprint of a building with no increase in design flow as proposed, the system shall be assessed to determine the location of all system components, including the reserve area. The proposed construction shall not be placed upon any of the system components or within applicable setback distances as detailed in 310 CMR 15.211. Official records are available to make a determination regarding the location of system components, and inspection is not required for footprint changes. If there is to be onsite reconstruction in the near future, and septic components need to be reutilized for another structure, a Title V inspection would be required unless a current Title V inspection is available. Components must be properly located and marked, so not to be damaged during construction.
Not awful, but everybody's all, understands it, it's okay. But I think it's, like, clarifies when we look at our Title V inspection.
Okay?
Okay.
Moving on. Garbage disposal is, if present, must be removed at time of Title V inspection with proof of removal attached to report. Plumber received a picture of Saint Plum.
Yes, sir.
You cannot remove a garbage disposal in Massachusetts without a licensed plumber, obtaining a permit and having an inspection. So, receipt and picture is not going to work. It needs to be done by a plumber.
Okay. It's good to know.
So if the plumber, it'd be.
Properly permitted?
Properly permitted and inspected.
If present, it must be removed.
Any issue with that? Any issue with that provision?
No, no, none.
So we have a, we have a response from Brad Fitzgerald, SFG Associates. Regards this and later on, something, number 26 under that section, it just says, the proposal calls for garbage disposals to be removed or not to allow them, which that's in Title V. It says, what if the homeowner is adamant on having one, we always discourage them, but you may run into people that really want one, and they're allowed in Title V. My comments list, you know, my thought was, if they're adamant on it, come and come and get it, or seek Board of Health approval, and they can explain why they have to have it.
They want it all redesigned, and they think.
Right.
They're designing for it.
Then the board, the void can determine what all the design needs.
So, that's my, that's my recent comments, it hurts the, I said.
They're nothing but trouble for subjects, so.
Right. So I just, is that the license form, or will I have to do that?
Must be completed by a licensed plumber.
Yeah.
Similar, similar language. The eight, I think this one, I gave a comment on number three at the bottom. And six. Going back.
No, that's on, other than that.
Okay, so.
On number 10, completed, Title V inspection reports must be submitted within 30 days, including fee, and all supplemental documents as required. Title V reports will be reviewed by the health agent.
I guess we just put that in writing, because some people don't, don't comply with the 30 days. I know it is. We'll just restate it. I don't know much, but I know that's on there.
Septic tanks with a capacity, this is number 11, septic tanks with a capacity of less than 1,500 gallons, and a concrete baffle on, on the outlet must be replaced with a 1,500 gallon two compartment tank with inlet tee and outlet filter installed.
I have a comment from Mr. Fitzgerald, I'm going to read that first, that may help clarify.
Maybe exactly as I.
Yes, exactly. So Mr. Fitzgerald said, a septic tank that's less than 1,500 gallons but has a PBCT, is that allowed to remain? My comment to that was, I think in our discussions, where, when we were doing this together, was, trying to remove a concrete baffle can ultimately have serious consequences on the integrity of the tank. So, that's why it was specific to concrete baffles.
Yeah, you gotta check it, knock down and put the.
I do believe that it was.
Yeah, they're out, they should get out.
And mainly because trying to get a filter in the concrete, it's, that, that was.
It's in a less than 1,500 gallon tank, so if you go 1,500 gallons, then it's.
It was tested, yeah.
I agree with some of the comments, I've done it, you can't do it if you take care of doing it, and you do it correctly. My concern with this is that you have, someone calls for a Title V inspection, you go out there, not a problem with the system, it's worked flawlessly, they took care of it, they maintained it, meets all the minimum criteria for Title V, all of a sudden, they gotta put a new tank, because it's a 1,000 gallon tank. There's going to be a lot of pushback from the public, because I've inspected thousands of systems, and a 1,000 gallon tank doesn't make a great of a Title V inspection. Typically, if it's in a situation where you can put. Typically, if it's in a situation where you can put PCT in, they do make nice retrofit kits for that, that work very, very well. And if you get the right person installing it, it can't be done. So if the board was, you know, apt to try to approve this, I think there might be some pushback from the public.
What if we put it as, that would have to be marked as a requirement, that would have to be marked locally as a needs further evaluation by the health agent. Health agent could go out, look at the situation, work with whoever's gonna maybe do any retrofit, and say, look, I wanna be here, I wanna, when you do it, and if there's any issues when you do the retrofit with PCT, the agent can make a determination at the time and say, look, this tank's gotta go.
I'll defer to the board of health on this one, if you want, don't want thousand gallon tanks in this town, I'm fine with that.
I would say it's a good solution, I think.
Yeah.
Whatever the rule of the board is.
'Cause you might have some, one that's easily retrofit.
I, I've done it.
Depends, all depends how it's been taken care of, what's been put down, down the system, there's so many factors.
We were just worried, like, because we were talking about putting the filters in, then you have those concrete baffles, and you already hit them away, and spider cracks, whatever it is.
Ah, I, I agree, but if, if a tank is not deteriorated, it's probably not liquid tight enough.
So when did this, when did this start making thousand gallon tanks for concrete baffles? Nineteen eighty, eighty-seven?
Eighty-eight.
So you're talking thirty years ago, so you're like, I think it's thirty years old that we're talking about trying to retrofit. So again, needs further evaluation, I'm guessing nine times out of ten, it's gonna be no brain, it's gotta be replaced.
I think you gotta look at it.
That's up to the board, if you don't wanna allow them, that's fine, just, you gotta, you gotta make it so that your regulation says it's a conditional pass or needs further amount, 'cause in Title V, there's nothing that says a thousand gallon tank can't work. It's liquid tight enough.
I, I know another town very close to here that tanks twenty years old, they gotta be replaced.
That's a problem.
Which is mind-boggling.
Yeah.
I know.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a call from that board of health, they made a mistake.
Big town.
So.
Yeah, obviously, you're replacing the system.
I have to agree with that, because my tank's been in the ground since nineteen seventy-three, it's a thousand gallon, it's got two compartments. I don't know what's on the end of it, but.
Um.
Goes somewhere. Supposed to right deal with those.
First up for a retrofit.
My, my compromise to number eleven would be that it's not an automatic conditional pass today, but that would be a trigger for needs further evaluation. And that way, at least there's some oversight of us looking at it and saying, hey, you know what, this tank, not that baffle, it really doesn't look good, we're not comfortable with it. Replace it. Or, hey, you know what, that works, you know, people who had the house, they took care of the, the system, the tank's in really good shape. You know, I think the retrofit would be okay.
We're gonna just take your information and we'll.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So tomorrow, my system will fail, 'cause I talked about it. All right, perk test. Maximum thirty-minute per inch per inch for repairs.
Which is up from twenty.
Which is up to twenty minutes.
Yeah, that was my question, it's what was the rate in town now?
Plus.
Twenty right now.
It's an increase.
Oh.
Cloud fine.
Number two, maximum ninety-minute per, per inch for repairs. I don't hear anything, so it's, it's okay to move on. All new construction must include four observation holes and two percs, regardless of configuration, trench or bed. I don't think anybody has a problem with that, right? Additional percolation tests or soil evaluations may be required at the discretion of the board of health or health agent where the soil characteristic, characteristics are variable.
I know, go ahead, what do you wanna say?
My only thing on that, I shouldn't care, is being a site guy, but being a developer, is it so? We show up to go perk test a new construction lot that people are hoping, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna be able to build a home on here. We get two passing holes, two observation holes, they both pass. Maybe the agent looks at it, it's like, ah, let's go do a third, and that one doesn't perk for some stupid reason. We, we've passed Title V, they're both perked, technically a buildable lot, what's it gonna do if test three fails? Is this gonna kill us for the, for the people of trying to get a buildable lot now, I'm just curious. Guess that really doesn't affect me, I'm just taking hold of the spot.
It's, it's, it's.
The only.
Total, but two of them are perked.
Yeah.
So it's two observations and perk.
Right. It says additional percolation test may be required, so what happens if number three fails and you've got two good ones? And we're on this.
This, I think it's.
I mean, we're on the site with questionable, I mean, over the years, it's like, oh boy, you dig here, there, everywhere, and it's like, hey, we find good soil, we found good soil, we got the perks.
I think, I think we need to allow it, not to take it away from it. It's when you come across where, those, those models, that's kinda faint, I don't know, let's leave it alone over here.
Or you want, they were three feet more long than in the.
Yeah, and we wanna just make sure that this is consistent.
I agree, but I was.
So Title V, uh, fifteen one oh four, says additional tests shall be required if soil conditions vary or is determined by the approving authority or system design to exceed two thousand gallons a day. So it's already in there?
Yeah.
That I, or the health agent has the authority to ask for more.
Yeah, my question was just what happens if you can't get that third in the print, it doesn't perk, I'm just, I'm just looking for answers, but.
I, I.
Like, what happens?
Again, I'm age myself, and once you, once you get the two perks, you know, as long as they're where your primary reserve, you know, so it meets all that criteria.
Yeah.
I wouldn't be going looking for more perks.
It's usually the holes, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I have questionable, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Groundwater, I mean, I think they wanna be dropping on the hole just to get a little better idea, and that's, personally, that, that's my.
Or you can just go that way instead of that.
Exactly.
Okay, all right, yeah, let me.
This wasn't.
Maybe a little over designed, so I just didn't know if we got two holes, and then next thing you know, third one's done, now you're, you're lost kaput now, that's it, you know?
If the soil layers are changing grades, you know, just to make sure the system goes the right direction, so you still have four feet, I might just drop another hole just to make sure.
Beautiful.
Number five, soil tests and percolation tests performed prior to nineteen ninety-five shall not be valid for use in repairs, upgrades, or new construction. We're good? Number six. Mini excavators are not allowed for soil examinations, the machine must be capable of digging, why don't we add up to ten feet, instead of two ten feet, to make it clearer?
Yeah.
And without shelving. Uh, and that's, and, uh, parentheses, backhoe or excavator.
That's my main reason for coming tonight, even though I understand what's here, and I totally agree, I just think this needs a little clarification. Uh, we've been using a mini excavator now along with numerous other contractors, uh, probably for about three and a half, four years. Just perked this morning. Uh, the machine I have's a nine thousand pound cap, I've got an eleven-six dig depth on that, uh, which I ran the specs on today just to make sure. And, uh, I know where you're going with it, that way somebody doesn't show up with a four thousand pound inadequate piece of equipment that only goes down to eight feet. As a professional excavation operator, we know not to bring a mini to a new construction perk, we know not to bring too small of a machine to a repair, but I understand that you guys need to do some type of clarification. I, I just think the mini excavator line should be out of there, and you should do some type of verbiage on it stating that for a repair perk, the machine must be, you know, capable of digging ten plus feet, not up to, it's gotta be ten plus, we gotta go down ten minimum.
Oh, I was gonna say, it must be able.
For a repair, you know, and not in new construction, I understand where he's coming from, a backhoe or, or a a good size, you know, ah, what do you put on there?
Steel trap machine, right.
Yeah.
Right.
Fifteen tonne more excavator to show up.
Here's the other side of it, you gotta remember that when you're doing a repair on a system, we're invading the people's property. Now, you may not look at it that way, but that's what we're doing, because now some inspector told him they gotta rip up their yard and put twenty-five K in the ground, and he shows up with a steel trap machine and tears the hell out of the yard, that's an issue. So sometimes you can't even get in the backyard to do the perk to even see where you're gonna do the design. Now, obviously, you need access once the system goes in, and the homeowner has time to digest it and say, hey, half the deck's gotta be cut off for us to get back there. But going there with a small machine, have to dig ten feet, I agree with it, but you can do that with a mini, or a machine that, uh, is not steel trapped, and won't destroy these people's yachts in the meantime.
Yeah, I agree, we're fitting through fences, we're going through people's garden areas, much easier with tone with a smaller truck.
I see it all the time, I see when they, you do a perk, they're like, they're taking the fence apart.
Yeah, they're, they're. They're a godsend, they have.
So you're talking about repairs.
They're, just for repairs, yeah, for new construction, this, you can't show, you can't use a mini excavator for that now. I mean, that's just the wrong tool for the job.
I would, I would maybe change it to excavation equipment. For all soil examinations must be capable of digging ten feet or more.
Ten feet minimum.
Without shelving.
Yeah.
And, um, no mini excavators are allowed in new construction.
There you go.
Yeah, so that, that, that very well works.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, very well works.
It's gonna get awkward, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, very well works. Well, this is gonna be in place for a lot of years, so somebody coming into town to read that, gonna be like, oh no, it came from me, that's how I would take it, you know?
And the mini's not so many anymore.
No.
These things are twelve, thirteen.
Oh, yeah, as I, as I learn this, uh. How big is your bucket, is it like?
It's, it's, uh, it's about, it's about twen, mine's about twenty-two inches, so a standard backhoe bucket's twenty-four, couple inches narrower.
I, I went to one with Todd, that I don't think the bucket was more than twelve inches or sixteen.
Well, you can get some small little four thousand and six thousand tonne machines out of.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would say eighteen would be the narrowest bucket you wanna show off.
I agree.
Yeah.
Cause you can really get around there, and you just watch the guy.
And I gave you a question, if someone showed up in a trenching bucket, then, I mean, that's an issue, you know, so.
Remember that one, I wanted.
Well, I, I also had a couple instances where we've done our holes, and we dig down to eight and a half feet, 'cause that's all the machine can get, or eight feet.
Yeah, which is not good.
Well, and then we walk away, and then the engineer goes back to the drawing board, draws up a plan, says, you don't have four feet of material in your holes, because you just had to remove it.
Right.
And it's like, what do you mean, it's like, well, you only dug eight feet, if you dug nine feet, you would've had four feet of material, so now you're screwed, so.
That goes back to the site guy not showing up with the right piece of equipment.
Which is why we're saying, we'd want the right piece of equipment, is what we're trying to say, so.
So bu, bucket size, bucket width must be a minimum of eighteen inches, is that reasonable?
Yeah, eighteen inches, yeah, eighteen inches plus, hands down.
Yeah.
That way helps on the mini stuff too.
Yeah, I think so too, it just, it just clarifies.
A mini excavator is a pretty broad spectrum.
Yeah. Big time. Yeah.
I think we're, we're thinking about a little, little, little bucket.
I see, Title V inspectors will, well, I would consider more of a micro machine, you know, but in theory, that could be.
Like I said, mine, mine's down eleven and a half feet, now technically, it's, it's a mid-sized mini I have, so I mean, they really go a lot bigger than what I have.
I think that satisfies your concern, which I agree with, you know, once they show up with a shovel, but, um. Now, you, now, I take it when you pull up, if this gets enacted and they have that machine, you're just turning around and leaving.
Well, I would let them dig the first hole, and when they can't get to ten, that's when I would leave. Cause they, every install, they can say, I can get to ten, I can get to ten, and they'll turn the machine on at ten and everything else.
Yeah, but you gotta leave that without shelving in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's what I get.
Yeah.
It's, it's just, what, too much to waste the time on the engineer and the help, they just watch you wail away for hours.
Time is money, everybody want, we wanna get in and out too, so.
Yeah.
So that's it, we're good with that?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, just to throw it out there, I had a call today from Mark Rogers, who's also a Title V inspector, and he said the same thing, he said, I have what's considered a mini excavator, but my machine can dig ten feet, and that's why it's a matter of, he was the same thing, mini excavators are not allowed, it was a connotation of mini excavators, so.
All right, good. Um. We're just going about ten minutes or seven, and you got to seven, all right, if nobody's jacked, I, we could move on to some of your concerns that you've.
Uh, I, I keep that right there. Keep that right here, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you for listening, by the way, 'cause this is important when you're on my side, 'cause it makes life frustrating.
I guess you're all running in the field after John Philpott.
Well, the only other concern I have is twenty-seven, which I talked to Todd about today, about your force mains to D-boxes. You want the last five feet to be gravity on force mains, and that was gonna change the grading around rear systems significantly, as long as you're aware of that. 'Cause most, most force mains come up to the D-box. Now you're at a five-foot flat at the D-box, you're talking about, you know, this thing being a lot bigger than what it was.
So, yeah, on that, what are you talking about, two, the two going into the four-inch pipe, going in?
And then the last four or five feet would be gravity.
I agree with you on the five feet, but I think the two and the four is much, much better, uh, maybe, maybe cutting that down to two feet or so, maybe, off the D-box. There's so much less splash going on in there over these years of just.
I would say if, if it's a tight block, then the engineer can certainly request a bearing, and it's a local.
I mean, most rear systems, quite frankly, are repairs, and you've got a lot of tight water sometimes to begin with. You're adding five feet of length to this thing, you know, the other thing you could do is.
But nobody said you had to come in the end of the D-box, you can come in the side of the D-box with a force main, so you're going in the same place when your lines is going out, so you're only.
Do you still require a tee even with the five feet? No? You think the water's low enough?
There's no tee required now.
There's no tee on the four inches that go in there, it's usually just, uh, you know, usually just the, the two inches is, is, uh, on the uphill, and then when you put, then when you convert from the two to the four, the four's on the downhill.
Okay.
Right, so basically, if you come in the side, you're like, so you need that much higher than the one going out.
Yeah, cor, correct, correct. Five feet might be a little on the extreme side.
The only thing that I've seen is if you want, if you want, even, even with that level, because the force main's got a lot of head behind it, if you line that up with, uh, a lateral directly opposite, sometimes that water goes right over the baffle, runs right for that, that one along. So are you gonna eliminate, you're gonna eliminate the tee prop, the tee required, right? All right, let's see how it works.
I like it a lot, we've been doing that for.
Yeah, a lot of times we're doing.
Years, I like that.
Okay.
I like that, as well as insulate the D-boxes, but I know that's not, you know, whatever.
Well, I don't want to insulate the D-box, that's a pain for the Title V inspectors and all that, so that's why we've added in here about them covering over the D-box.
You put that foam on the D-box, try and dig that D-box up.
It doesn't freeze though.
But if you put copper on it.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
Well, well, on number twenty-seven, number twelve and twenty-seven are the same, but one of them, so obviously, it was duplicate of number twelve happens to say four feet, and number twenty-seven says five feet, so we have to eliminate one anyway, so.
Why just go with four feet?
So you wanna get rid of number forty-seven?
We're doing the same, is that right?
Yeah, it's a, cause it's a full, uh, one percent, and twenty-seven even have full line, so I think you just gotta get rid of, uh, twenty-seven.
Straight along there.
Good? Twenty-seven done? Any else?
Well, thank you very much, thanks for listening, I appreciate it.
Oh, you gotta let me, okay. Excellent.
Have fun.
Thanks.
Thanks for the call.
All right.
Number seven. Number seven. An observation test hole is required at proposed foundation location.
Blowing engines?
Any comments, except sometimes we do perks on new construction sites, and we don't know where the house is going. Sometimes we do, and then generally, if it's, if the land is flat, we can re, we check it anyway before the house goes in there, but not normally during the perk test phase.
Well, in that case, and, and we could potentially just do the perks, and then when they know where the foundation's going at the time to dig the foundation hole, I can come up and observe the groundwater, and we can do it then, it's a secondary. But like, we have that site on Hart Street where it's like, we have perks over here, and the house is up here, and where is the water table, we didn't know, so we have to assume. So it doesn't say it has to be done at the time of the perk test, it just says we need to have it, so. Most of the time, you have an idea where the house is going.
Yeah, that's why we.
I understand the subdivision, you'd go back later, maybe do twelve holes in one day.
Yeah. My, my comment on that would be, it might be better to do it second phase, because if we're doing it the day of the perk test, and then we're digging a hole, saying, now, you gotta, you gotta. Because if we're doing it the day of the perk test, and then we're digging a hole, saying, now, you've got a, you've got an excavator operator, and then he zips a hole ten feet deep where the foundation's gonna go, we check out the groundwater. He's just filling in, you know, topsoil, sub, rocks, the whole nine yards in that disturbed hole here, you know, and disrupting the, the virgin soil. Possibly where the footings may be going afterwards as a, as a.
So you want a regulation that all holes have to be backfilled in reverse order, how they've dug out?
Yeah, compacted, no. No, I'm just saying, that could. That could put, you know, so if, we did some work maybe five years ago on breaks in, in town here, it was the same thing, we excavated, you know, we, we didn't, we didn't do the perk test for these people, we excavated the guy's foundation out. And the back wall was a total frost wall, we had to drop down another three foot two to get our four foot, uh, four foot foundation wall in there, and. The previous site guy was in there zipping a bunch of test holes and looking for a spot to perk from what we were told. And there was lit, I mean, literally nothing but pudding about six feet deeper than where we were, it was terrible, we had to dig out a big area, plate compact, and the whole nine yards. And, you know, to the best of our ability at that time, so that's the only thing I'm looking.
I forgot to ask Jim, what's the regulations generally, from groundwater to a foundation? The bottom, I think it's twenty-five?
There was, we proposed one in here, but he doesn't have one in the building department.
Is that bill of code on that?
I don't think so.
Well, we usually, I don't know many regulations, we always sit as a minimum of a foot above the, with the basement floor. I think we hold it as eighteen inches, if they spell it out, so you definitely want it above the estimated season high water table.
You definitely want to know what it is.
Yeah.
Or right near it? Does it have to be right?
Yeah, no, that's fine, I'm saying, no, I, I don't disagree, I'm just saying. He might, it might be better, as, as Todd mentioned, we would do it on a second phase once the foundation stayed. Cause we do show up to a lot of lots, and so they're perked, and next thing you know, people are picking their houses out, putting them on the lot, but. You know, the last thing you want is disturbed soil underneath your footings.
Clarify that with a.
It's up to you, guy, I'm just making your aware.
Will we be required at the time of the foundation?
Well, just that it has to be done, it doesn't say mine, so. I think almost every site could be a little different, how they want to do it.
You'd have to, you'd have to coincide with, with Jim.
Yeah, it's tough.
He's gonna have a foundation permit, we haven't gone out there yet. It'd have to be like a check.
It's tough to clarify, cause we just did a couple on Elm Street where we showed up, the perk test was marked, the foundation was stayed. So it's better to kill two birds with one stone, now, get the perks done through the, through the water test now.
Already there, and he's already given another.
Maybe you gotta put in there.
In new construction, maybe that's just a conversation that's happens.
Maybe it should get done before the septic permit gets issued, or, you know, something like that.
We've done other permits, we've allowed them with the condition of a hole being done at open holes, so it's not the first time we've encountered this.
Yeah, you need the test.
I mean, if you set six holes and the water table's at twenty-four inches, and you put the foundation in six feet below ground, it's kind of a, a no brainer, and you have to dig a hole. But if you hole to twenty-four inches, I'm gonna say, well, it's the same as the rest, so you're okay, you know? The basement's above ground, and you don't really need the hole here, so.
Okay.
Okay, number eight. De-water percolation tests are not permitted for new construction, increases in flow or.
I have a question. On this fifteen, one oh four, nine. Where does that nine come out of?
Oh, we're on number nine now. Number nine?
No, no, he's asking for.
I read at the end of references.
Perk test number eight, yeah.
For some reason, I don't seem to get the latest title five, and I can't find these numbers, not, not in the references.
Does anybody have to have that?
I do, but unfortunately, um, no, what. I think what some of these numbers were, is when we were talking about doing these numbers, we were talking about adding that in as the number nine, there's only eight in section one oh four, so we were gonna add that in as number nine, if we were gonna supplement title five, so it's actually, there is no number.
You know, the supplements too, like, all through this, this, like, you know, number five, a three and.
We can just strike it if someone wants it.
Right, we were talking about, there was, there was another format we were considering, we were gonna say, here's a regular supplemental to title five, and it would be like the next number. So if there's one hundred, one and two, we were gonna make it number three. But we changed, we decided not to go with that format.
We were gonna make it that's title five, you can't change.
That's why we changed the format to this, so we need to strike those numbers that don't apply.
Yeah, it's probably better off just to strike it. So nobody gets confused, cause an individual might be actually looking for that.
Right.
Yeah, you're right, yeah, I think we should just strike it.
Strike, strike them all, I guess.
I was looking for the reference of this, and this, these numbers don't appear on title five.
Yep, I'd say that was the, the alternative format we considered, so.
And I have one other question, I wonder if we could go back to number one.
On which step?
What would the rationale on perk test of changing to thirty minutes?
State is sixty.
I know the state's sixty, but we're trying to hold down building, and this is just gonna encourage building.
You can't use title five to stop building. You can't use septic regulations to stop building.
I know we can't, but you could still could keep it at title twenty and not say, you know, you're, you're trying to stop building. And if we went for the sixty.
Well, we considered all of that, we decided to go with thirty. I don't do title five, but I, I come in since, you kinda tell me that. Twenty and thirty is not a, gonna cause a boom in housing, I don't think.
We also, we also had, uh, heard here from, we had two or three, uh, one or two people come in, ask for bearings, I was just wondering, they asked up the same thing, so. With that, we were discussing, uh, title five is sixty now.
Well, sixty, almost all lots are gonna pass.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
At sixty, cause you get sixty, and you dig deep enough, all lots are gonna pass.
No, we can consider that.
Will we go make up on our draw?
Number one, the number nine. All successful percolation test holes for new construction shall have PVC pipes set in the holes for identification. Pipe shall be a minimum of five feet long, three inches on diameter, with twenty-four inches above ground, with TP number and date of test written in permanent marker.
Right now, we're, uh, already requiring pipes to be set, um, but I'm showing up and everybody's kinda using a different pipe size, a different pipe length, and it's like, felt we should spell it out. But I don't think we've got a problem with five foot long pipes, they take a certain order, but now.
Moving on. Septic design. Number one, if a waiver is requested for groundwater separation, distance to a property line, well wetlands, well, wetlands or surface water supply. A bedroom deed restriction is required under the authority granted the Board of Health. Under three ten CMR fifteen, four one three, the deed restriction shall stipulate no increase in flow.
It's, uh, like repairs, because the wetlands are governed by founding noticing intensive, things like that, so we can't do that anyway. A lot of these.
Wait, new construction does.
Yeah, Neil said, no.
There's no way to fix that. Well, we could add in for septic repairs if the waiver is requested, we could add that in.
Yeah, and the deed restriction, that would be something that would be recorded at the registry.
That's, that's great, yeah.
Yeah, we do, we do deed restrictions, a lot of times, there's two bad little houses where they need the restrictions. Yeah, that's fine, they can ask for a waiver, but gonna repair, pretty much have to put it where you're gonna put it, and some of these.
This, yeah, this is after asking for the groundwater separation, so.
Yeah, using.
So if that's actually granted, you have to, you have to say, oh, obviously, if we'll let you get closer to the groundwater, it can't be going to increase in flow.
Yeah, yeah, which is fine, usually, the other towns don't require that we, like, a recorded document. But if this, if we, if we have a three veteran, we ask for any waivers, then if we got it, they can't come back and, and put it in. They can't increase it to make it four better or something like that. I just wanted to know as far as the deed restriction, where we have to go, we have to register.
Yeah, normally, those are recorded, notarized, they're recorded, and then we, we get notification.
Will you have a separate form for that, separate town side forms?
The title five, I have a.
Title five, but like, we made one, but should we add right in here that the form will be provided by the Department of Health?
Yeah, totally good.
Cause we, we sign, it's signed by the Board of Health.
It's fine, yeah, it's perfect, cause that'll be part of the, actually, those, I actually, you can approve those. Uh, no, not all of them, property line distance, you have to go in front of a meeting, before the board. Actually, all surface water supply. So it'd have to come before our standards.
Number two, all tanks shall be two compartment tanks. A gas baffle is required on the first compartment, and an effluent filter is required on the second compartment.
That's good.
Comments up here? Moving on. Number three, for all upgrades or increases in flow, tanks with less than fifteen hundred gallon capacity must be upgraded to two compartment tanks.
Should we put all two tanks in series? No.
Discussion when we were in our workshop, well, we should do it that way. Like, if somebody has fifteen hundred gallon tank and they wanna do an addition on the house, they can maybe put a thousand after it, to get to the two compartments, or do we want to make you replace it, that was. We went, we went back and forth.
Well, two tanks in series, if the tank is not older than, you know.
And I think that's why we got away from it, is because it just got very.
Cause you are gonna come across individuals that, when they're doing the perk, they'll say, look, this tank is alright to the deck. It's only, I can put another tank over here. That might be have to be when we're approving the plan.
Just to put your like comment, are we considering repairs to be the same as upgrades, and what does balance up the tanks have to be upgraded for repairs?
Well, this, this one here is for new construction, because it says all new tanks. So this one, everything in the tanks, even if you're on a septic repair, if you have to put in a septic, replace a septic, you'll put in a tank, it has to be a two compartment, that's.
Yeah. Well, we're on number three, right?
Well, on the, yeah, well, I'm looking.
Basically, what you're saying is it only comes into play with tanks with less than fifteen hundred. So if you have a fifteen hundred, you're. You're rolling, you're still good to go, it says tanks with less than, so that'd be a twelve fifty, that'd be a thousand.
Seven fifty.
You have a sign, you know what I'm saying, so.
Thought on this is, if you're putting a whole new system, because it's fail, you have all your equipment out there already, you know what? A little bit of extra money. Do it, because your tank, well, like we just said, the last time a thousand gallon tank was put in was in the eighties, so, you know, it's, it's time to.
Yeah, the two compartments now.
So we want it to be for all repairs, upgrades, or.
Yeah, so, so you're gonna say there's a fifteen hundred there already, you're gonna, they're gonna go put a new fifteen hundred, a two compartment, correct?
No, it says, that's another lesson. So if you get a twelve fifty thousand, seven fifty, or a thousand. So we wanna make it probably repairs as opposed to upgrades, or?
Yeah, it's a for all.
It can be a big difference between a fifteen hundred and another thousand on the end of the other, right?
No, well, engineers, they'll say, tank can remain, and then they go and look at it, say, you're here, but I'll replace it.
Yeah.
Simple. Alright, number four. Any increase in flow will require new construction standards, including maximum thirty minute for a inch per grade. Nothing? Number five, changing the design engineer record will require Board of Health approval and a sign off by original engineer. Prior issuance of the certificate of compliance, a waiver may be granted in extenuating circumstances. Good with that?
Yeah, so if, if an engineer does a perk test, and they go through with the design, that's the normal procedure, and they do the ask, hope they carry on the way through.
Right, but the engineer dies along the way, you have to switch engineers, and that would be one.
Or his the lottery.
Vice president?
Okay, number six, the design engineer rapid shall be responsible for performing all required inspections and preparation of the as-built plan.
So maybe you like that one, Bob?
Yeah, I think it's good, much as for us, but for everybody.
Oh, you like that one? Yeah.
You like a lot of these.
Yeah, we, you know.
On the surface, the installer shall not perform or prepare the as-built plan. In cases where the installer and the design engineer are the same entity, a separate third party engineer shall prepare the as-built plan.
Okay?
Oh, yeah.
I don't know what engineers it's called.
We rely on that last as-built, uh, cause we're not doing the numbers, to make sure that's correct. If that's that same person making that same mistake, you never catch it.
No, 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 it's perfect.
Number eight, geofabric shall be required for all plastic chamber systems. Fabric is to be placed directly on the chambers unless it contradicts the manufacturer's recommendations. Moving on.
Wait, we have a comment, it came from, that is, Joe.
Yep, says, I design infiltrated quick four plus chambers quite often, they do not require filter fabric or filter fabric, they require the quick four plus.
He is correct.
Well, a lot, most of them don't necessarily require fabric, it's kind of optional. But in my experiments, we found that too many, and the stuff flies in from the sides, and kills the system prematurely, so. We discussed putting fabric right on, unless it conflicted directly with, so if you say to quick four, I wanna put the fabric on, they're gonna say, no problem. But some, but some of them says, no, do not put the fabric on, but that's, I forget which one that is.
Would you start on a bolt infiltrate?
Nope, any of the plastic ones.
Or what else?
Any, any of the plastic ones, not the ones that are wrapped, like the presidents that have the, the fab, the, um, the mesh around it, we're talking like any of the. Kultec, the R thirty-sixes, the quick fours, the ADS, whatever they are, the N twelve.
The rechargeers.
Yeah, the rechargeers, so.
Yeah, I agree with you.
So as long as it doesn't conflict with the main factor.
So if the answer to this question would be yes, it is required unless infiltrates, you know, you can't do it. And they would not avoid warranties, and they would not force it. But I don't think many of them are gonna complain, so.
Moving on to nine, the four corners of the SAS shall be marked with rebar or iron pipes, minimum light six inches, set below finished grade.
Instead of having a locating table, nobody can ever locate?
I think that's an excellent adoption to the my law, the metal table's a waste.
Notice we didn't.
That's a great, great idea.
Yeah, if we didn't specify how big the rebar needs to be, or how big the pipe, so.
You don't like the metal table? That metal table?
Not at all.
Can you find it?
Not at all, doesn't work.
Well, you can't, but.
We've tried, it's so tough.
We've got, okay, thousand dollar metal detectors, you can lay the roll on the ground, it doesn't pick it.
Well, I think if you tie it to the, the electrical panel in the house, you could.
Okay, pumps are prohibited in the second chamber, two compartment tank. Number eleven, the circuitry for the pump and alarm shall be separate circuits, wired directly to the main panel, not a sub panel.
Alright, well, this is number two, why I came tonight, just for.
Listening?
Yeah. Just to, uh, get an explanation why that's in there, that, that's all, because we run into it, I mean, we, we do so many air installations, it's, it's pathetic. We're constantly running into it where panels are full, we show up, the electrician shows up, the panel's a chart full. Uh, sub panels out of ten systems, uh, maybe, maybe four or five of them again, have, having a sub panel. Sometimes we can bust off mini split some, free up some room in the, in the breaker panel, but a lot of times we can't. So I'm just curious why that's going in there and why Board of Health's getting involved in electrical code. Now, not as an installer, I really don't care, I'm talking as a consumer, people out there, they're putting these septic systems that are anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars. And now to come in and not be able to put a sub panel in, they potentially.
So title five requires all pumps must be equipped with a high water alarm powered by a circuit separate from the circuit to the pumps. So what we've been seeing is some of the electrical panels, they run one out and then they split that one now into the two, so if it blows in here, you lose them both. And that is why there's supposed to be two separate circuit breakers at the bottom.
Yep.
So, um, it's the idea of if you ran into a sub panel and then at the sub panel split them into two, but what they're, what they're doing is that it's all in one. And we went, we went over this with the electrical inspector.
Yeah, it's not right. Sub panel's supposed to be wired off the main power feed company and not jumped off.
Alright, well, sorry, I missed what, we went over this with the electrical inspector and this was written with his input.
It was.
Yes.
We might, my main issue, I mean, if, if the pump is pulled off a sub panel, fine, you know, if it trips, your pump's just not gonna work. But that alarm should be on a separate circuit.
They both have to be on dedicated circuits, you know what I mean? That only makes common sense.
But completely separate, you know.
Completely separate circuits.
With some shoddy electric work and, you know, whatever it may be, I've seen some crazy stuff, um.
My only concern with that is, is, so I, I'm curious to see if maybe if we showed up, showed up in there, the panel was full, if the people possibly would be able to put a sub panel in, maybe take a couple of the light circuits or a refrigerator, put it there and then wire the system into the main panel. Or are these people gonna have to do an upgraded circuit?
Well, that's anything else, yeah, they can ask for waivers for any of it.
Then we gotta look, look situation.
Yeah, we see it all the time, these, these homeowners are scraping to pay for the septic, I hear it constantly. You know, crying about the prices of the systems and money and waiting for closings and, you know, a lot of people don't have the money to pay. So now to tell them like, here's your system, now you've got an electrician here, now you're gonna replace your service, but you know, hey, for another three, potentially three, four grand. That's, that's just throwing a lot at the people, you know, um, I'm on my voice and I don't, like I said, I'm an installer in town.
Well, the other part of that, right, says that the alarm panel has to be located inside the home. Now, there are some times when putting it inside the room, it doesn't make any sense. And so I've allowed them to put it outside. And so in this case here, here's the regulation, they say, here's why I can't do it.
You're gonna have to, have you got the input from the.
In building inspection, building condition before we did this, yes. Because I was worried about it, because what I've seen, too many of them were all being split at one spot instead of that with the panel, so.
Yeah, which is just shy, it's not, you know, it, it is what it is, not the, the electrical inspector shouldn't let it fly at the end of the day. Uh, that's the bottom line, so now asking, now asking for.
Go do that inspection anyway.
Right, so now asking for, when do you ask the vamins for that? Cause myself will say, Mr. Barrowby shows up to do a septic design, he's not an electrician.
No, it would be at the time of the installation is when it would come up.
At the time, so the electrician can come in and.
Oh, well, you're, you're in the plan.
I would, I would just say, you know, at time, hey, he goes out to the inspection, I say, hey, man, it's a electrician, he's here, there's no way he can do this, Todd can go and look at it, be like, yeah, absolutely, you know what, that's fine, I'll allow it. Just make a notation on the the as-built or, or something like that.
Well, if I can't make the decision, we get the electrical inspector to come down.
To come down and do it, yeah.
Generally, generally it's either I can do it or I can't do it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not, I don't want to, it's I can or I can't.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Yeah, I just was looking for a little input because like I said, we run into it quite often, you know, um, some people still have the old fuses. Okay.
Next. Number twelve, flow pumps to a distribution box shall enter the distribution box by gravity flow with a four inch PVC pipe pitched downward through the distribution box and pitch of one point, four one feet, by minimum length of four feet.
We already went through.
Yeah. The fluid filter is mandatory.
Well, yeah, still have a lot of things to come in without the biggest stuff, the gas bottle, yeah, the standard condition.
Rises have to be installed to within six inches of finished grade on septic tank inlet and distribution box and to grade on the septic tank outlet and pump chamber outlet.
Can I add one thing to that?
John Ward.
No, well, not today, sec- secured and warranty. So, because I've seen people say, it's a cover. I wanna say that, I wanna screw down. So security will understand that it has to be fastened somehow, you're in.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
No, I agree with them, they should be fastened out because they're not enough and we're putting in plastic covers now, that is super light and kids can pop them off so easy, it's pathetic.
Screwed down.
We gotta screw down.
Setback requirements for bordering vegetative wetland, salt marshes, inland and coastal banks, septic tank, pump chamber fifty feet SAS.
That's what we have now, or that's already in our, we're just reiterating the.
Wonder what's existing inside.
No, um, Patrick Stroh is commenting number fifteen sixteen, asking why, if there is a reason why we're doubling the distance or irrigating wells from that, that'll buy. Well, it's already existing, I recognize, we have a lot of wells in town, we have a lot of surface water supplies in town, we have a lot of shallow water, a lot of wedge, a lot of reason why we need to make sure that the ground is protected.
So, so the same, same for sixteen, correct, you said?
Yes.
Filling of wetland areas to meet setback requirements is required. The construction of private wastewater disposal system shall not be signed without the contract of slash install for its pertaining septic and solids permit and a copy of the approved plans from Board of Health. Well, you'd be surprised why we, we had to put so many of these signs in writing.
I can imagine, I can imagine. You know what's gonna happen next.
Number nineteen, a one inch by four inch box shall be reserved on the plan for Board of Health notes and shall be located near the title block. Number twenty, the Board of Health office shall be given twenty-four hours notice prior to inspection. Of course, that's for scheduling purposes, so that's. Uh, twenty-one, the Board of Health shall inspect at minimum the following, final excavation, bottom of hole, final construction prior to backfilling and after minimum required rating is complete.
It's not only the C. Right, it's not only the C, it's just your regular backfill. Same thing, you get, we'll get down to it, you can shoot your grades before the.
I agree.
No, we have to cover squint at times, that way.
Yeah.
Clearly, we'll put everything up, I'd see you want to.
Understand.
Can you read now? Overall.
As-built drawings, this is twenty-two, as-built drawings must be stamped and signed by the design engineer and must show the location of all system components and piping ties from at least two permanent points shown, provided to locate the inlet and outlet, cover the septic tank, pump chamber, grease trap, distribution box, end of bleaching treasures, and four corners of bleaching fields. All plans shall contain two benchmarks, all indoor and foundation elevations and finished grade by contours shall be shown. Location of any wells or water supplies on the lot and within one hundred fifty feet on adjacent lots must also be shown.
All will be okay?
We're good.
Twenty-three, all as-built plan information shall be contained on a single sheet for all single family homes, minimum plant size shall be eleven by seventeen.
I know that affects you, because you did two sheets usually.
Usually it's, they compose the as-built grades on the first sheet, then the second sheet says, Ferrari, that's the way you want it, it could provide anything.
Or even if you show it in text down, I think you can fit it on most few plans anyway, so.
We have minimum plan eleven by seventeen. Bigger than that's the routine for files, so can we just say must be submitted onwards by seventeen?
Some of the engineers.
I mean, usually they commit a less by seventeen, sometimes they.
We can scan and everything, it's not bigger requirements of.
They copy that.
Correct.
Of the.
We have to give one, for new construction, we have to give one in the building.
We need two, we've got one, a lot more, and maybe we get it, and one above that. But just eleven by seventeen is perfect.
Scans.
Day or once.
Emails, yeah.
Just as minimal size, so I was thinking of.
We just say shall be eleven by seventeen.
We can kick it around.
Yeah, I would still only one sheet.
Yes, let's say, I don't like signing two different sheets and then if one gets pulled off and put with something else, then you know.
Okay, twenty-four, in addition to paper copies, all the design plans and as-built plans as well as all supporting documentation shall be submitted electronically, very stamped in PDF form.
Okay.
That's where we're at, is to be electronic, we say that.
Twenty-five, final grading shall be indicated on the as-built plan, rating shall be one for contours with spot grades of fat pump chamber, D-bots, ends of SAS and that breakout. Rim elevation shall be indicated for covers brought to grade. If loom is, loom is not spread at time of inspection, it shall be noted on the plan.
And, uh, Mr. Stroh just had a couple, final grading be required on asphalt, the gravity system without mounds or breakout.
That would make sense, too, we can do it, but it's gonna be basically flat. And then they say that we shoot the aspots, but then the installers would have to go back to cover the D-bots, so we're waiting and this is the aspots, we have to go back and shoot it.
Well, we had this discussion because of a particular subdivision in town where, I don't remember the name of it, it doesn't matter. Uh, he drives through and everybody's got these beautiful green lawns, except for all these little brown rectangles in everybody's front yard, because there wasn't enough cover over any of the septic tanks. But the yards were flat, so they looked great, but, um, and, and that's what this is about, so it wasn't about whether it was a mound or not a mound, it was about making sure there's minimum cover and not too much cover over the system either, so.
You know, what they did, they, we had brown spots showing up, they just went out there and dumped a load of dirt over it and boom, spread it around, now there's a hill there.
Yeah, hopefully it doesn't get rained in another few years. Systems are just soaking up the water anyway.
Alright, number twenty-six, garbage rotters are prohibited. Twenty-seven is gone. Shared system requirements, number one, the reserve area shall be constructed at time of installation for all community septic systems, the reserve area installation must be completed prior to the issuance of the certificate of compliance. The reserve area shall be constructed to the same specifications as the active system with piping connected and ready to receive effluent with a gate valve, which can be turned to activate flow to the reserve area and cease flow to the active system.
Just a question, I know I'm probably shooting myself in the foot here, cause I'm an installer, but speaking on behalf of, uh, the public on this is, uh, community septic, uh, I don't know if that, that may need a little clarification, I understand if it's a I don't want to name drop on communities in town, but four to six unit community and above, yes, I agree, uh, is this pertaining to a, uh, husband and wife splitting the lot up on the side of them and moving their son or daughter in and they have to put a shared system in and both both utilize that shared system, is this pertaining to that particular install as well, if it does say shared system?
This is pertaining to the larger systems, mainly because then you get all these.
I agree with that, yes.
Um, I'll call them dwelling units, you know, if it's like condo type thing, right? And you get a failure, who's, one who's responsible for paying if there's an issue? If the homeowner association doesn't have enough money to cover the cost of the new system, then the other issue is if you have a extreme failure, like totally catastrophic. These people can't use their facilities, now you gotta wait, you gotta go out, may have to go out and do more soils, you're gonna have to wait to get a plan submitted, approved, you get an install, you could be like in months, where are these people gonna go?
Correct.
So here you have something in place, catastrophic failure, you turn a valve and you're good to go.
Yep.
Um.
I a hundred percent agree with you.
And safety, that was our.
I do agree with the.
Condominiums are not shared systems, one owner who owns a six, um, dwelling tenement is not a shared system. This is multiple owners, so you get into a subdivision with thirty-seven homeowners in one team field.
Okay, it's just not specified here, so to me, a shared system could be two dwellings on one single.
Defined in title five, we didn't redefine it.
So what is it, what is it, what does shared mean?
We go for two different owners.
Correct.
You know what it talks about in.
That's what I'm saying, so if there's a set of parents that are splitting the lot of.
We get, hey, let's go there and say, hey, look, you know, this is what. Get it.
Title five says you're supposed to put up surety, you know, for shared systems, all shared systems.
Yeah, but the problem is, is the.
Yeah, we should have did it for, moving for any.
Right, there's the homeowner association, if there's ten thousand there, the homeowner association doesn't contribute to it, and there's only ten thousand and it's a hundred thousand dollar pair, you're.
No, but just to be, you were supposed to put a condition saying the amount is X.
Right, but if they build the new system, then the number is much, much less.
I agree with the month, three or more dwellings, you know what I mean, maybe not just two dwellings out there in there where it's families involved, that's tough.
What is, what is shared system?
The definition of shared system is a system serving more than one facility in which has been approved through title five, the system serving a condominium is not a shared system.
Well, read down a little bit, what it talks about.
No, that's, that's.
No, money and.
Oh, you're, oh.
Money and put away in escrow or surty and. And it hasn't been inspected every three years.
No, but if I built across the street.
Part of the development that's already built.
Community septic.
Which is, it's not built.
If it has, this is only necessarily surprising to do application, we can't make that.
So we have, we have it as a community septic.
I know, I saw that, I'm just asking, I'm, all I'm doing is asking, not that we run into it, nor should I confirm, because.
It's like our, our, we're, we're, we would be, you know, a large subdivision where, you know, you got thirty, forty houses all going into one, three units going into one.
Exactly.
So the shared, the financial, let's say, is a description of the financial insurance mechanism, post ensure effective long-term operation and maintenance of the system. These may include, but not limited to, an escrow account, letter of credit, forms of loan or insurance policy.
Yeah.
But if you put the system in the ground, then you don't need to do money back.
No, I hear you, I, I, I.
We can say, we want money set aside, or even like a, I don't, whatever, set aside in case of an emergency.
Right, as far as this is concerned, I mean, I, I totally understand where you're coming from with this, especially if it's a community, you know, half a dozen houses, a dozen houses, even three or more units, different owners, adults, husband, wives, families. But the shared system also comes into play when it's a, a, a next door lot, that's family, family, you have one leaching field.
Cause the same ownership?
Different ownership on the two lots.
And they're gonna need, and that, if that comes into this in the future, we have to follow title five. There would be some kind of either bond, escrow, I guess they weren't doing, I don't know, it says, that's the only way you could, you can ensure that system, both owners will know that they are responsible for that, so, so if one person has money and the other person can't afford it, that money's already put in there. And these community systems, if there's not money in there twenty years from down the road, you're gonna have some serious problems.
But you're talking like say, two, two, yeah, two houses.
I'm talking two houses, like if you and I live next door to each other, where you were like, hey, we're gonna have a shared.
So the only way, the only way you can do that is vary it to Board of Health.
Yep.
And both lots have to curr. So if you've already curried both lots and you come in front of this board and say, I want a various, even a lot perks, I don't want to build a septic system. You know, the, the odd, the, the odds of that happening is so minimal, but these community systems, it happens over and over again where there's value and there's no money.
Yeah, I, I, I know.
Protecting the community, so.
Yep, yep. Okay.
Number one.
Yep. Yep.
Two? Two, each individual home shall have a separate septic tank, according regulations. Two, each individual home shall have a separate septic type according regulations. There'd be any problem. Number three, homeowners association documents shall include provisions for individual septic types to be pumped every two years, deed restrictions for the number of bedrooms, and deed restrictions prohibiting garbage grinders.
I mean, we could say in addition to the documents required, without file the EPs, but. The financial insurance and the.
All systems, all shared systems must comply fully with Title V. On the shared system.
And number four.
Number four. Just so we, we covered us all, what's in there anyways? You can't take away from Title V.
Ready? We're ready. Move on to well installations. If connected to town water, the drinking well must be disconnected from the house.
Next.
Nope.
Boy, I'm telling you, too many questions. What, what's the analogy for that, I'm just, I'm just curious for my own homeownership in town?
You can have, you can have it as part of irrigation.
That's what I'm asking, why disconnect, because if me, myself, I'm on a well, if we had town water run across my.
You can't have two primary sources of water, you have to know which one is which.
Right, so if my main house was tied personally, what I would do would tie my, would be tie my house to the town water, I use it for my sinks and showers and all that good stuff, but I would leave my well connected to my exterior faucets, but.
People, people have that, we just want to make sure it's not a drinking well.
Right, this is only about drinking. You can use, you can have a hundred irrigation wells in your property, we don't care. But he's saying.
But technically it's a drinking well, it's gonna be, it would be.
But he's saying, you have your well, exactly, but you're open for drinking, it pays, and now it is a need well for drinking, you want to use it for non-podable purposes.
Correct.
So we say disconnected from the portable water source, the town portable water source, so they're not interconnected? That way you can leave it if you want as an irrigation well and non-podable.
I guess, yeah, which is fine, I just don't, I, I'm curious to, as to why, I don't know, I mean, we can tie in wells, you know, you don't even have to have a license to tie a well into your house, you can put all your wealth, you just can't tie, you know, your cold water in, but the regulations are so vague on wells, it's pathetic, you know? We can run our own wires to the well, basically, but the electrician's gotta hook them up, I mean. Why?
To prevent a cross connection.
It's, it's the drinking well, one part of towns actually make.
That flowing, now that's actually good, okay, see, that's, there's the answer, that's, that's good, there's the answer.
Well, another town, yeah, we haven't gone that far yet.
Yeah. I would, I don't understand why you would want both, but like you said, and like I said, just for, specifically for washing cars and watering the grass, that would be it. Cool, okay, thanks.
Uh, number two, any contaminant exceeds the MCL levels during testing, a retest from the kitchen faucet is required prior to occupancy, filtration may be necessary.
Now, would we add in what the, what just like the portability, even is it arsenic for well? Did we have a requirement?
Yeah, this is, that's in the well, right, this is just, so maybe, you know, whether things belong here or not, but this was because um, to do a septic plan, it would need to be incorporated with the well testers and well rates. And yeah, it was arsenic, I think it was in, we had it, yeah.
Lastly, number three, GPS coordinates ought to be provided for all installed wells.
Uh, Bradford Stowe, that's what I do by GPS coordinates, any state plane coordinates. Yeah, I mean, what would you say, Bob?
Yeah, that is correct.
And, yeah, it's certainly. I've just run into info people over the years that come, well, I don't know, I looked down, said, where's my well? And, well, if the old septic plan from nineteen seventy-two doesn't show the well, we didn't have records, and they're traipsing through two acres or three acres of land trying to find a well, and have no idea where this is, I mean, going forward, if you want to murder it, this is a pinpoint exactly. Well, also, Bob, since somebody's doing the development next door, you don't have to go in somebody's property to locate it, here's your coordinates, okay?
Cool. Someday we may get an internet to go around to all the residences and GPS of our locations.
Someday, someday, yeah.
Maybe someday we'll actually, we're going to some good well regulations, there's nothing to think about. We put a lot of emphasis on just where does the effluent go and set it and last up, and what we should be more concerned about is drinking water. And how we get it.
And then someday we'll also be able to clean up the, like, the Taunton rivers and the other rivers that are in town, like. We go through the.
Which I will see really, I'd probably. There's, there's one more, I just want to say that. On variances for power. Do we require, we say, they have to ensure.
That's Title V, Title V, right, so.
I don't want to be in wash, contest, nothing.
I would suggest maybe just going in for two weeks. So we go a lot, we have, we expect, we have, we definitely have to have all, we have to see them, all shade on the vehicles, and then I'm here, it's the public hearing.
So, but we have, so, but I, we have to, if we move on to the next one, we have to open up a public meeting, uh, discuss what we talked about, open it up to the public, close the public meetings, then make our determination, because we, we cannot keep going around and.
Oh, no, I just thought one more time, you get all the. One of the ones that we need to talk about is whether we inspector, life inspectors, you know, system inspectors, whether these rigs are on the first test and stuff like that, so there is a discussion to be had.
But it's when you close the meeting, we discuss, that's the way, probably.
So we could both, public hearing, right? You can close the public hearing tonight, or then we can continue the public hearing.
We have one more.
Could I ask a question, I'm sorry that I was late.
Sure.
You know, but I want to go back to that, why all cesspools were automatically, uh, failed? There's some people that have got cesspools, there's some good soil, like if you come north of Main Street, and then go all the way south down to where I see eye, that side of the street, that's all sand. And it could be an older person with a cesspool, and it's gonna pass. And the thing about a cesspool, when you pump it, if it's in the groundwater, yeah, it fails. But if it's not in the groundwater, and it's good soil, why, why you fail on a cesspool?
In my opinion, um, like you brought up, as you say, and all the persons living here, and the system's not being used, probably the way it should be. With systems like that, um, I think, I think they're also leading on their roles, and you might have, just with the Title V, a new family coming in there, larger family, within a certain short period of time, that system may fail. You're not giving that family that opportunity, um, and I think it's time to identify that this system's fifty years old, forty years old, it's time to upgrade.
Cesspool sixty, seventy years old.
Yeah.
Yeah, when was cesspools, when did they start, Title eleven, what was it, nineteen sixty-seven is one cesspool's level? So these are all, all systems.
That family might be thinking eighty years down the road, let's put a pool, no, you're gonna put in a septic system. Because you're gonna kill the system fairly quick.
Then there's one other question I have about the, the water flow. Says we measure from the meter of the water. And I suppose you've got a swim pool, and you're adding water to the swim pool. Your readings aren't gonna be right, that's going into the septic system.
Title V inspections require water meter readings to be submitted, we've been getting a lot of Title V inspections where they just say town water, and they don't give us the water meter readings. It's, it's required that they give them, but you, you're looking at two years, so you can look at the winters and the springs and the summers and.
Yeah, some town two also have two meters.
But that's a good point, maybe, the, the inspector looking at that report, and hopefully the, uh, the inspector could mention, they just filled up their pool, whatever it is, because you are gonna see a spike.
Yeah, but one spike is not enough reason to say you're out of whack, and one spike filling a pool over two years is, it dwindles away to, you know, it's, it's not gonna be, it's not a reason to fail, they can use a thousand gallons a day, it won't fail the septic system.
Yeah, that's true, it's just gonna show you.
Right.
And once you fill up your pool, you're not gonna fill it up every year either, so. I would hope so.
All right. So we wanna continue this, or what do we wanna do?
What was it, one, two, three?
I would say we need the public hearing, hoping that we can continue it, but. You can continue, I'm listening.
Maybe. You have to advertise.
No, you advertised at the start of it.
Yeah, we can continue with.
You have to.
Planning or something, the public hearings will last for twelve meetings all the time?
Yeah.
The thing is, we, I would suggest that we notify the people that were here this evening, of the continuance, I would notify everybody again. We're only gonna discuss the things that we discussed outstanding, maybe, what, ten, twelve items?
I mean, I, the comments we heard tonight are the ones you kind of expected when we were in workshop, and we knew there was gonna be pushback for certain things, but we got some good input tonight, and I think we came up with good solutions that will satisfy ninety-nine percent of people, but we can't satisfy a hundred percent.
Well, you know, if this is continued, I, I don't plan on going through the whole document again, just those items that we.
Don't leave here, I'm off now. It was advertised, everybody was notifying that, we could notify engineers, installers, inspectors, show up tonight, or like other people submitted emails and, and other documents with their incidents, that they could be here.
We'll show you later, actually. But we have, we still have to discuss these stuff.
Right, we can close the public hearing, and then we can. We just, it smokes ourselves out of the discussion. I'm just very concerned about the advertisement. No, definitely the advertising, yeah.
Well, I would.
How much is the night was in there? Several hundred dollars, you know, it's interesting, they had it run twice.
Next meeting will be March thirteenth.
March thirteenth?
We could have a brief workshop in the middle to discuss these, or we could.
Well, we, yeah, just discuss, yeah, I would say discuss, I just need, I mean, we can, we're not gonna make a lot of these corrections out of mind, but like licensing, installing, inspectors, it's something that we'll have to talk about.
Well, let's. Just want to make a motion then to continue the public hearing until.
Mr. Chairman, let's, uh, make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
Close the, close the, uh, public.
Right, just close the public hearing. And then we can still discuss for months if we want, before we.
How many more to time?
We usually continue the public hearing.
If you close, you can't have any input from the public.
But we advertised, this was the night for the public hearing, it was advertised in the paper, notifications were sent to.
But if you close it tonight, there's no more input from the people.
And that's what I, that's what I was hoping to do, because we took the input from the, uh, people in attendance today, closed the public hearing, and discussed it as a ward to, um, go with those changes, make some amendments to it.
I agree.
I, I take it we can close it, and, uh, doesn't need to be voted on this? Just close the public hearing for the discussion.
And we got a motion second. Motion made second, close the public hearing, all favor?
Aye.
Close, carries. Thank you for your input.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's a lot, a lot of good changes.
Makes it better regulation.
Now, do we need to?
I'll have to make.
Can you put?
No, because all of this is. On the agenda, we're ready for public hearing. Yeah, we're holding the public hearing, close the public hearing, so next one, on, um, on those business. To the previous.
I agree, this is made a decision.
Should I make a motion to go? I don't think. No, we're on. Blake is moving. To continue, so I make the.
Continue discussion.
Just make a motion to continue this for our purposes, for discussion and future voting, or whatever else.
Okay.
So that way we'll be on the agenda.
Okay, that's the thirteenth, all right. Chairman, make a motion to discuss the proposed regulations on the March thirteenth meeting.
Second.
Motion's been seconded, all favor?
Aye.
Close. All right.
Do we hold the, we hold the hearing, you got the input?
We should.
We're gonna finish the meeting.
We're gonna, we're gonna. I don't wanna keep cable here, it could be over there at our, it could be over there at our. I don't know, so, we're gonna finish the, uh, the meeting tonight, they've just started, so, they have a way to go. So I, I think, because on our agenda is, I'm doing P and Lisa, my motion that we finish the, uh, finish the meeting, and I've already talked with the board that when I get there, I get there for the most part. Okay, motion made second, all favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Okay, we had a few change, on the, on the road with the, number five, we had a couple of, uh, changes to the Board of Health Project, I went to, I met with the town administrator, and, uh, a few things that we came up with, under animal control, uh, animal health and welfare. We, she felt that we should have that budget at five thousand, so that was a two thousand dollar increase. Uh, we found out that we had to have two extra days for people's salaries. So the salary for the, um, animal control officer went up by one hundred ninety-six fifteen, salary for the inspector, thirty-four forty-six. We removed two hundred dollars from building repairs and maintenance, we added two thousand dollars, purchased trash bags, the communications, um, I think that was already in there for two thousand, wasn't it?
It was at three fifty, and we increased it to the two thousand.
Yeah, so, actually, the, anyway, it's where it was. The mental lieutenant for two extra days, thirty-seven sixty-five. We took out the salary for interns, because that was going under the town administrator budget, and salary health agent for the two extra days, uh, was four ninety-eight forty, for the office manager was five oh two eighty-six. Is that, that sounds kind of high.
It does, what are the maths, sorry?
Four days, nine hours.
It could be.
Times two days, right?
It could be.
It's money in two, two extra days, that's sweet, so.
Twenty-five, fifteen, seventeen hours, all right?
Oh, we, this is a, we raise the.
Oh, the two percent?
In the extra hours.
Oh, oh, that's.
So now you're ten hours, so it would be twenty, and it's in the tiny, tiny range. It exists, however, two days, yeah. This isn't for this giant, this is.
These are gonna be verified by the town accountant anyway.
Yeah, this is our recommendation for the budget.
So that, that sounds a little high, so I, I think we should probably get a motion to approve the budget as amended. So move.
Second.
The motion made second, approve the budget as amended, all favor? And close, close the carries. Can we table, uh, someone to just charge the fees, or?
Yeah, but before you do, we need to sign one of those, uh, revised budgets. Uh, yes, we, um, still have not done the piece, because that was up last week. So, yeah, motion to table have to be appropriate. Motion to table, uh, the motion for the stormwater construction.
Okay, five B.
Second.
Motion made the second, and to table, uh, Title V, uh, the guy who listed stormwater discharge of research, all favor?
Aye.
Close, okay. Um, we are proposing, as a new meeting, we are proposing a special article to replenish the household hazardous waste collection account. Uh, right now there is twenty-seven or twenty-nine.
Two thousand three hundred and nine dollars and fifty cents.
Okay. So there's no way we can get by a household hazardous waste day that we wanted to have this year, so. I would ask for a motion to approve five thousand. So move, second. Motion's made seconded, all favor?
Aye.
Close, all right, carries. Uh, oversight of six B.
Okay, one second.
Sure. It's just got a date on it.
Yeah.
What's the date?
Twenty-seven?
Yeah, twenty-seven.
Should I put the day on that?
Sure.
Twenty-nine.
So happy birthday. Happy birthday, happy.
Okay, oversight of animal control officer, my meeting with Mallory, town administrator. She questioned as, as we have discussed this in the past, about where animal control should be. I believe it's law enforcement, and I think we've discussed this before. And I spoke with Stacy this evening. She feels the same way, I think, as all of us, it's under law enforcement. So what'll happen, you would be reporting over there, and your whole was, it would just go under the police station. So, um.
No, does that mean play on our information state?
Well, that's, that's the thing.
The animal inspector, you just still falls in the court.
So animal control would fall under the police station. But my animal inspector's out, so we had a law help. No, because some towns, it's two separate people, so it works fine that way. Just the missed out is just one person. But I still will report to the board for, for things, because it's public health.
Okay, so we. Decouraging of duties that Stacy now holds, animal control will report to, uh, law enforcement, police station, and animal inspectors, the reports at the warehouse.
Is that the one via Chief McDonald?
I don't know. This is, I mean, I knew that it was coming up, because it was mentioned to me yesterday, but I didn't know, like, I had not known about it from a long ago, but.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion to table this till our next meeting, and till such time that we can find out which Chief McDonald's, how the transition's gonna work.
Correct, okay.
Second. Motion made second, in all favor.
Aye.
Close. Okay, motion carries.
It's gonna watch for your case, and then I'll watch for your case.
Um, we were gonna do this before, I think there was only one person, we were on the police station. So.
I'm sorry, motion is until we can discuss with the chief.
Uh.
Pretty sure it's.
Be sure, you want.
All right. Table?
Uh, we have two weeks to table, the meeting ending February sixteenth, February twenty-third, or total three thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars, seventy-four cents. So any questions?
Not with comments, still testifying?
I don't know, he was.
Yeah. So what's normally animal control office, or?
He can say it's quiet in this, that will be very long. No, it's not that it's quiet, it's just a different time of year, so, you know, few confronts, though, we can run dogs outside, or whatever. I did do my usual report. With a great dose of stress. And I had a lot of the problem that they're looking, or they're probably in town, and a lot of, a lot of horses or something like that was going over everything, so they don't have to do something, and then we go for that, they can't. We did have fire town on Saturday. Somebody that, not that has handles, but does dog training. I did talk to him, and he's upset that wasn't burned, it was in the house, so he's, just wanted to reach out just to make sure there wasn't anything that I did.
Um, in addition, like, we drafted up a cannibal law. Cannibal cannibal law. I meant, I was gonna call, obviously, and have her add it, but it was already pretty late by the time I thought it, it's gonna be discussed with this board before going to the planning board for discussion. So we'll get to that, um, cannibal law, next meeting. And then should be, if we all approve it, we're all on agreement, then I can hit on the planning board agenda. For discussion out there next meeting, which comes one week after us, so. Correspondents? I'm sorry, it's you.
Is Stacy's vehicle, the vehicle that's on set?
I'm just waiting for a quote.
Okay, it's, I wasn't sure, you're gonna go, yeah.
Yeah, I, I put out pillars to like four or five different places, I'm waiting for quotes. Yeah, because my vehicle needs to be inspected supposedly by the end of month.
That's not.
I don't think they'll let me drive it off the lights, so I'm not taking it for us.
Yeah, sixty-eight, great rejection.
Well, I, I think it's safety, so I don't think.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, they won't.
If it's bad, I think.
They'll let me drive it off the lights, but. I don't think they will be driving them off and stuff, so I'm just gonna.
Get a quote.
Get a quote.
So we have a ready report, is that just submitted, or have we had, signed, or anything with it? I don't know.
Good job.
Good job.
Anything more to report, Todd?
Yeah. Uh, just, this came in, um, we spoke with a couple of towns about this. This is our Regional Five Hazard Abolubility Analysis, and apparently this Region Five higher board we witnessed to do some kind of analysis, and these are examples of the spreadsheets that they're trying to put together for each town, and it's basically an assessment tool of what we think our severity level is for recent, like a blizzard, ice storm, medical gas failure, child abduction, you know, like all these scenarios. And they wanted us to put them and evaluate them on scales one, two, and three, and how prepared we are to handle them, whatever the odds, and whips.
That's right.
We don't have the bandwidth to do this.
I, I personally think that a lot of this isn't necessarily so much public health specific, it's emergency management as a whole, so this is probably something that maybe needs at the Emergency Preparing and Committee, you got the police chiefs, fire chiefs, you know, as a whole, they need to go through this. I don't think it'll take more than probably half hour to get through it. If you have everybody there saying, you know.
They never even sent us a spreadsheet. All we have is.
Right, somebody else already filled it, and there was like.
I'm just saying, just, once we get it, if we get it, that's probably the right, right time and place to. And I was saying about the estate town, as I was saying to Rob.
There was very little.
These are things that, that, you know, some things the police chief will have, and things like that, other things, fire chief may have an answer for.
Right, so basically what I'm saying is, they have to be submitted by Friday, and we were like, we don't have the ability to get this done by Friday, so we are not preparing. That's because it's going to take some time to put it together.
Well, maybe just appropriate forms to fill out, so.
Do you wanna, you wanna make a motion, or? So did the emergency pass maybe?
No, you said, I mean, you guess the forms that you're supposed to have to fill out. So we can't, even if it did, they still can't send it back.
They weren't exactly clear on what you're supposed to be doing, either, but they, they, they're like, oh, we send you instructions, but they didn't send you instructions, but they didn't send you spreadsheets. And you look through all the emails, and you talk to the other towns who got it.
Yeah, I don't know what I seen, though.
No? But we're Region Five, was, are you?
I kind of, I kind of missed it, I don't know.
Yeah, we're fine.
Our town administrators said we're way ahead of the game.
Yeah.
I heard one email previously from them that, like, I don't know how many communities, very few communities participated.
How'd you know, like, you know, it shows on the touch.
These are things I should have gotten to the MBS, not. What?
I mean, please, should have, how we, they can go back.
I wish.
And the others, it's gonna be hybrid.
He goes, well, he was issued.
Right. All right.
Yeah, two, two other good things, uh, in the process of writing the RFP for the trash collection and recycling collection. We have a lot of having to work with town administrator, with animal officer, and trying to put it together, we're almost done, but we'll be circulating and have to report for any comments for that. Uh, we're also working on, mostly us, working on one for.
Environmental.
So right now, it's one contract for one company that does the environmental, they measure the gas, the water, anything else in the inspection. Now, our town administrator asked them to break it into three-part business, so that we, we could have three different companies do the three different things, it's cheaper than having one company to operate.
How long are the contracts for that?
Three years.
How many more years?
Forever for landfill.
Not just for long, we keep going down, I think.
Thirty years ago.
Oh. I think it's.
I'm not close thirty years, but, um.
Yeah, it's not that bad, I'm sure.
Windows got.
The Windows got there.
But, um, I'm gonna say two thousand.
No, oh, in twenty-ten, we reduced it from how much we had, they called, like, so it was already reduced one, so I don't know when it'll be reduced again, but. They'll work it, they'll pack it together, so it's a lot of checking to. And I think that is about it, yeah. I, I was at all last week, so it, I don't know, so it's not really. The good is, if the two of us have somebody that's all about that kind of guy, so. That's all.
Correspondents?
Uh, I hope motion will prove the minutes.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve January twenty-third, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Meeting minutes?
Yeah, motion made second, it, all favor.
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February third, two thousand nineteen.
You went here, so I stepped on second notes. Uh, motion made second, all favor.
Aye.
Close, carries. Now, so, so.
Oh, yeah. Uh, we got the text函, guys. All right, um, coming into your mailbox very soon, probably in the next two weeks. You will have a mail that will include a pink bag and a pamphlet, or something like this, front and back. Basically, it's for textile collection. Uh, it'll be a pink bag, you can put textiles in it that you no longer want, except for in the trash. Like the clothing, shoes, um, even if they're ripped or torn, or dirty, it's okay. Just basically any, any textile, it's going in there, sheets, blankets, anything. Just have to put the, sorry, your stub, when your bag's full, you put it at the end of the curb, same day as your trash pickup, and it will be picked up. If you need more than one bag, you can get them either from the Board of Health Office, or there should be a number, you can call them.
And when they take your pink bag, it's full, they'll leave you an empty bag right there, so. You need to continue this.
And we will have supplied pink bags at the Board of Health Office if you have a lot of items that you should dispose of, with all the values of weight.
Uh, we have this, no, no cost to residents, the bags don't cost residents anything. Um, it's good, it pulls usable products out of the waste stream, it reduces our costs, especially with recycling going up, it may help offset a little bit of the cost, you know, for our rubbish disposal. Uh, we also, town also gets a very small amount of money per pound. Uh, this is a great program.
Yep, and Rosamund just said that, the flyer's on the website, so if you want, take a look at it for your mail. And it will be running on the table starting March first, they're gonna be putting it on the local channel also. You'll be selecting or reading it, if they're reading tonight and the next two meetings, so.
This will be an ongoing.
Friend of work.
Service, not, not just a one, one-time thing.
Anybody have any else? Yeah, just a quick thing, I went to a conference today for the two thousand thirteen municipal, so I'll touch base with the, uh, there's new inspection form which have used, it's no longer criticals, it's priorities now, it's just a different language, different things that new establishments, establishments will need now. Actually, they have the post advisings, even the saving have what they have, like, most of what they have on the menu, the products, and they actually have a posting that says, the, their inspection form will be available. Oh, wow. If, if you ask. So there's a bunch of little changes, visually, they also made those other changes that we made, those regulations for. So they just kind of, kind of review, and then be good, I'll touch base on that.
Yeah, we're gonna talk to them.
Yeah, because the forms are, the forms are different, they're online, but they actually have, I'll give you, I'll give you a copy.
We can do the same workshop meeting, too.
Yeah, it describes each line, it's good, it's good information. I'll send it to Ross, and we can pass it, she can pass it forward to you guys.
I believe we can finish shooting the new inspection project.
I, I believe, yeah.
That's what I was hoping, so, you know, I have to order any one of the spread out for that.
Just spread it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we can finish shooting, because that transition will.
Yes, that's it, I can tie that. Stay, what's due, June?
So move.
Second.
Motion made second, to June, all favor.
Aye.
Close. Carriers. Night, everybody, night, April, thank you very much.